My cousins from Nebraska are here. So, my dad's brother's daughter is here to visit with us right now, staying at Dead Horse Ranch State Park. Tomorrow at eight thirty AM, there is a mayor's coffee talk and we will be hosting Ms. Nie from Mingus Union High School. And Ms. Nie is their exchange Chinese teacher who is here teaching the students Chinese at this time. So she will be there and people can come and learn about her. And council members are definitely invited to attend also. So that is my report. I've done been quite a few places and done quite a few things, but I didn't prepare an official report, so we'll just go ahead and move on. The next item is awards. The 2014 Safety Awards. You know, actually, before we do that, I would like to go ahead and will our firemen be coming back or the ones who are here? Is everyone here now that needs to be for the Toys for Tots or shall we? Okay, well, I was gonna quick do that before we lost them, but are they like not on duty? So that-
They are on call, so they can-
Okay, so if everyone's here that needs to be here, then we'll go ahead. And is Troy Hope here? There he is in the back, okay. Let's go ahead and do this before we lose the guys that we have now to another call. So if we go ahead with Toys for Tots certificates of appreciation to the recreation and fire departments for their participation in the 2015 Toys for Tots event. And we have Chris Vogel and Keith Vogel here tonight to present this. I know, he never does, but he actually is doing a great job with the Verde Valley Military Service Park and leadership, so. Come on up, Keith. We know that if it weren't for both of you, that this probably would have a difficult time happening, so.
It's a fight, I understand.
Oh, I don't think so. If you would like to get up there or at least turn around, don't trip over all those wires, though, be very careful. We need you by a microphone. There you go.
The reason I try and do awards every year is to let everyone know, especially these departments, that without their help, it would be extremely difficult to do a Toys for Tots in this area. We have outgrown all our facilities and I contacted the mayor one day, I think it was eight or nine years ago, we had outgrown our little facility. And so now we are in the Cottonwood Rec Center and we are starting to outgrow that as well, but we have decided to break it up into two parties. So we have one party in the morning and one party in the afternoon, and that right now is working out great. And Ryan Bigelow, if you would please come up here. I am presenting this plaque to you for all the work that you and your people do for setting up the auditorium, for setting up the rooms for us to have our signups. I know it's a lot of work and cleanup because when you have, you know, six or seven hundred little kids, they're not the cleanest in the world. And so your group has done an amazing job and I just want to say thank you. And then the next plaque that I'm giving out is to the Cottonwood Fire Department. And I think all of the different, I think there's three shifts, and I think all of you during the time that you've been involved with toys, you have helped us with bagging and sorting and bringing the toys into the auditorium and setting everything up for us. And again, without the Cottonwood Fire Department, we nowhere could do what we are doing now. We have over twelve thousand toys that we have to get done every year and you guys can do everything in three days when it takes all us old people a week or two weeks to get everything bagged and ready for the parties. So I want to do this presentation to the chief.
And I will say this, if this year's an active shift, assemble all the bicycles from ship. All ships up in the back and we do all this, like, see if we can give the bicycles, you got the awesome, this crew.
And we had over a hundred, so-
So if you guys could watch, if you guys, if the firemen could pull those cords over a little farther, I would really appreciate that. That's a disaster waiting to happen.
We had rid of the tripods and added some cords.
Yeah, so if we could all step back a little so that Mary can get a photo of you all. And if you can't see Mary, like Dwayne, then she can't see you in the photos, so.
And the next presentation is to Amy and Troy Hope. And I cannot say, and I promised Amy, that this year I would be very professional and not get emotional when I talk about my Toys for Tots. And this award goes to Amy and Troy Hope, who have been my right-hand, right-hand supporters. And I can need something and I just text Troy and he takes care of it and makes sure it gets done. Amy, I can do the same thing with her. Without these two, and I've told them numerous times, if I ever, ever lose their support, I'm done. I'm in the process of training them to take over my, my spot. I don't want, I don't want to see, I don't want to see toys go away.
Promises, promises, Chris.
I'm too old to do it.
It's good to know how much Chris really appreciates them so much. So if you can all get to where, if you can't see John or the photographer, he can't see So on behalf of the city council, I would just like to say thank you to Chris Vogler for all that you do personally, all that you have invested in time and love and care for all those little children that we see if you, if we attend, we happen to be blessed enough to be able to attend one of your Toys for Tots events. And we appreciate you and know that Keith is there, he's got your back, but I think that we're especially grateful to our fire department for assisting you and helping you. And we realize from you that they do a lot and we're appreciative of all of that very much. Makes a difference in our little kids' lives. I see those happy smiles when they get that bicycle or they get that toy. It makes a difference for them, otherwise their Christmases would be pretty, pretty dark, I think, for some of those families, there wouldn't be much. And I would also like to thank Richard Faust as the supervisor of the Rec Center. I know that he, when you first came to talk to us, I of course referred it to Doug first and he referred it to Richard and from there, it's been happening every year, so we appreciate your support of your staff in making sure that that all gets done and realize that takes a lot of time at our Rec Center, too. We appreciate you. So anything else any members of the council would like to add? If not, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is 2014 Safety Awards to the City from AMR RP, Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool. And we have Iris Dobler who will present this item.
I'd like to present them to you, Mayor, and to the council and to the city. Our insurance pool, AMR RP, gives out loss control type service awards or safety awards each year. These are actually from 2014 because they don't finish all their paperwork and all their documentation and I think they'll entail a year plus later. So we just presented these last week at our safety committee meeting and I wanted to present those to the mayor and council. We received a bronze, which to me doesn't sound too great, but when we realized that the percentages of, of loss ratio that they look at is pretty small, to receive any type of awards, we did great. We had quite a few losses last year, so you probably will not be getting an award for the next several years because they look back for three years at your losses and maintain that in the percentages that they look at. And because our losses were so large last year, particularly in workers' comp, we probably, as I said, won't be receiving the awards for at least three years. For our workers' comp, in kind of both of these areas, gold means no losses and that's very unusual for many crew members to have a zero percent loss, but if you do, one to ten percent loss ratio, get a silver award, and ten to twenty percent, receive a bronze. Anybody above twenty percent, which there are also some who miss points, do not receive any recognition or awards. So I do have these two awards and I'd like to show, present to the city, that our risk management and safety teams did a good job and our employees and our managers did a good job of keeping everybody safe over at least 2013.
Fantastic. So do you want to take her photo with those plaques and go ahead and, does the council want to have a photo? No, that's good. Okay, so if you would just turn around and show off those plaques. Thank you so much for bringing those and presenting them and we can be very proud of our record. I think we had a few events this past year, especially I guess in the police department that will keep us from getting that award for a while, but nonetheless, we're glad that our officers are, are as well as they are and, and for those who were injured and harmed, we hope for a full recovery. Okay, moving on to the next item, proclamations. Proclaiming the City of Cottonwood's support for increasing public awareness of human trafficking. Is there anyone here to get this tonight or are you accepting it?
I guess I can.
You are, okay. Proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is a modern day form of slavery involving the illegal trade of people for exploitation or commercial gain, and whereas every year, millions of men, women, and children are trafficked in countries around the world, including the United States, and whereas it is estimated that human trafficking generates billions of dollars of profit per year, second only to drug trafficking as the most profitable form of transnational crime, and whereas human trafficking is a hidden crime, as victims rarely come forward to seek help because of language barriers, fear of the traffickers and/or fear of law enforcement, and whereas traffickers use force, fraud, or coercion to lure their victims and force them into labor or commercial sexual exploitation. They look for people who are susceptible for a variety of reasons, including psychological or emotional vulnerability, economic hardship, lack of a social safety net, natural disasters, or political instability. The trauma caused by the traffickers can be so great that many may not identify themselves as victims or ask for help, even in highly public settings. And whereas the United States Senate designated January eleventh as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day and other organizations have designated January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and whereas the City of Cottonwood is supportive of the many efforts underway in Yavapai County, including the production of the Nursery Rhymes music video to bring awareness to the issue of human trafficking. Now therefore be it resolved, I Diane Jones, Mayor of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the City of Cottonwood's support for increasing public awareness of human trafficking. And did you want to share a little bit about this? I know that Gail Mayberry from the town of Clarkdale is quite involved and, and asked us to do a support proclamation.
I think a lot of this came out of a concern that her husband had, Scott Mayberry, who's the director of Juvenile Court Services for Yavapai County. And he, in his role as the manager of the detention center, comes across young women who are, have participated in sex trafficking. Scott actually ended up writing a song about it in cooperation with a couple of the young women who were in the detention center. And the idea was to use that song as a way to kind of get people to understand how prevalent sex trafficking is. So there's been a collaboration, there's songs being produced, there's a music video that's being produced along with it. And that'll culminate on February twentieth with a filming of about five hundred people living in front of the detention center in Prescott. And I understand even Sidney McCain, who's the state chair of the Human Trafficking Task Force here, will resume, so we'll see where this goes, but I think this is an important issue of hoping that this video, music video, the song bring awareness to everybody throughout the state about the issue of human trafficking.
Thank you very much. So if you want to come up and accept this, as I understand, you're in, you're in the movie. So while you're going with you, the partnership, we'll be sure to be able to present it to you and show us the council's results. All right, the next item is college honors program at Yavapai College. A representative, who is Thomas Dunbar, will present information regarding projects under the program, including IM Yavapai College. And Councilmember Pratt, did you have anything you wanted to add before Thomas gives his presentation?
Just a fine example of the satisfaction we get out of doing the jobs we do. As you know, educators don't get paid a lot of money, but when we see young people like this that we, whose lives we can have an effect on and they step up and really excel, it just makes you feel really good, so I'm glad to have Thomas here tonight.
All right.
I'm just curious if you guys want me to bring up the slides presentation or the helper Google is?
Do you have it on what, do you have it-
It's on, it's on the Google slides, I just have to send it on.
Sure, we would like that, but we don't have Matt here to help us run the computer. Is there anyone else who can do it?
I have, I mean, I can access it, I don't know what the term is.
It should be a remote, I think.
Okay, so yes, if you want to go ahead and access it, we'll just go ahead and wait a few minutes to, for you to get set up. A picture is worth a thousand words, right?
It's mostly text, actually.
Oh, okay.
It's just hard points and facts that, you know, maybe might slip my mind. Most of the information is in the brochure and the pamphlets I provided, I also provided my email as well, just in case you guys wanted to get in touch with me. The faculty advisor and the foundation coordinator, it's a work with Yavapai College Foundation, which is their own philanthropic organization that provides a majority of the funding for Yavapai College, due to the budgetary cuts.
Thank you for reminding me that he would know how to do this. This, this generation was, was born with lots of abilities.
Yes, to be a college student today, you have to have some computer skills, just everything's available electronically.
There's not another one.
So do you want to catch the lights, chief?
So, let's see, back to the slide, I'm the treasurer of the IMYC club, the president is after the trial, she's on the Prescott campus, and vice president is, her name's Sarah, but her last name escapes me, but she is also on the Prescott campus, she's a nursing student and Emma hopes to become an art professor at a community college somewhere. They are, what is IMYC? The IMYC club is a club established by Terry Eccle, she's one of the foundation studies, directors at Yavapai College, she works in the financial aid office. And she works with Diana Dowling, who's the director of financial aid at the school, and essentially, you know, they have conversations about the difficulties students have with paying for school because most people don't understand that it's not just, I'm sorry about that, it's not just tuition, there are many fees, there's life costs particularly because community college students are not all traditional students such as myself. There are a lot of older students that have, they have kids, they have families, they have full-time jobs. You know, education becomes a necessity for them to stay current in the current economy and environment and sometimes they can't complete their education because of these difficulties. And what IMYC is about is philanthropy or giving back to them through our own success and raising money for them so that, you know, they can complete their education and continue to be productive members of society. It's a brainchild of students and faculty, like I said, we're working together right now, we have, we have an upcoming meeting to talk about a, a large spring event that we're going to be hosting. And my story is that, you know, I'm a student who didn't really have much when I first came out here, I'm originally from Connecticut. And Yavapai College, I'm on scholarship there right now, the college honors program, I'm the vice president of Phi Theta Kappa, and I recently won the All Arizona Academic Scholarship, which gives me a tuition waiver to any of the in-state schools. I wouldn't have been able to do that if it wasn't for professors like Councilman Pratt or the honors program director, Jason White, that I, I wouldn't have been able to achieve what I, I did without their help. And I want to pay it back to helping more students have success like mine. And that's, that's the goal of our organization. The overall goals, like I mentioned before, we want to teach students about what it means to be, those who are participating in the club, to be philanthropists because it actually can become a profession and a full-time job. Like I said, the foundation, that's, that's entirely what they do, is raise money for the school so that students can do, you know, they can follow their, their passions and pursuits. We want to strengthen the connection between students and staff through this and as well as the colleges and community as well, so Cottonwood, Clarkdale, the Verde Valley, we want them to have a, a close connection. We want them to hone their communication skills, help them build resumes, meaningful relationships through networking, networking through important people like you, city council members, professors, just ways of getting them to have meaningful, productive jobs in the community, wherever that may be. After their education is over at Yavapai College, we want to help cover student financial funding gaps and alleviate the general financial crisis through creating scholarships. We call it the Student Success Fund, but like I was talking about before, if a student can't afford to pay for the child's daycare, they can't afford to pay for gas for the week, they can't afford, afford to pay for food, we want to help bridge that gap. And we also, on top of that, we have something at Yavapai College called SALT, which helps with money management so that it's not a reoccurring theme that they, they need to come back and, and come to the school for money, so much as that they learn to manage their money better and learn how they can be more productive in school and with their money. We want to, basically, we just want to make sure students are successful, provide to the community, they be better educated, more competent, and hopefully, they, they give back as well. That's what we're looking for. The current state of IMYC, the, the club was founded in the summer of last year, it's not even a year old yet, we're still working out the kinks, we're still trying to piece everything together, we're working on organizing our first spring event, or our first annual spring, you know, essentially gala or gala fundraiser. We don't know exactly what we're going to call it yet, how, how it's going to be out thematically, but we're working on that and I'm sure you guys will receive invites, hopefully, you'll be interested in attending. Despite our infancy, over the summer and a few months, we raised close to three to four thousand dollars. We're at five thousand actually, after the last, we attended a, the fundraising committee meeting at the Yavapai College Foundation. And one of the, one of the members believed in us so much, they gave, they wrote a thousand dollar check right after the meeting for-
Awesome.
You know, and we've got five thousand right now, hopefully, we want to work towards being at about ten to fifteen, five thousand is the student success fund and ten thousand for endowed scholarship. And we're working with the college's own philanthropic organization, the Yavapai College Foundation, to teach, guide, and solidify the club going forward so that we know what we're doing when we're going out to businesses and coming to important members of the community, how to approach them, how to ask for donations, how to set up these events, that sort of thing. You know, that's what they're there for and they're more than willing to help, you know, without Janice, the Yavapai College, there was an honors gala usually every other year for a fundraising event. Last year, we wouldn't have been able to put it on without her, she's a wonderful lady and just want to give her thanks while I'm here. Short term, we want to have a training seminar, like I said, we want to know what we're doing. We want to finalize professional quality paperwork, like the brochures that you have, working with the foundation to produce professional quality materials that when we go to businesses or we go and we approach important people, they know we're, we're serious. We want to increase the membership of the club, particularly on this side, on the Verde Valley. Right now, I think I'm the only member from, in the Verde Valley, but we definitely want to have more on this side, you know, we want to balance, we want to, we want Yavapai College to grow on, in all the areas, be the predominant community college in the area, area and just make the community a better place. and just make the community a better place by, by giving back to it. We, we've built a website and a landing page that, again, in your brochures and in, in the donation forms, it should have that information on there. The kickoff campaign, we want to visit all the campuses, because we want to focus on internally, making sure that all the teachers, faculty, students know what we're doing, why we're doing it, that we're there specifically to help them. So, we're going to go with Penny Wills, Steve Walker, who's, I think he's the president of the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. We're going to go around to Sedona Campus, just the various campuses, ideally, and talk to them, share our vision, encourage donations. We want to host a large fundraiser. We threw around the idea of the name of Spring Fling, I don't think it's called that anymore. But it's going to be called something at some point, I'm sure. We want to raise, again, like I said earlier, we want to raise ten thousand dollars to establish that endowed scholarship that we can give to students on a yearly basis, and we want to have five thousand dollars for the Student Success Fund. Long-term, we want to establish community and alumni membership with dues and benefits. So, ideally, long-term, we'd like to get students who are a part of it and community members who believe in us on a yearly basis, they have a, you know, we, you have a, I think they said it was going to be a hundred and twenty dollars. I don't know if it's going to be reasonable, we're still working out the kinks on that for dues. But the benefits would be like, every year, they would come up with like a unique fundraiser. So, this year, the president, Penny Wills, talked about doing like a community cookbook. We go to each one of the restaurants, or we go up to just various members who are good at cooking, and they have recipes, and we throw it together in a collaborated cookbook. And then, you know, if you're an alumni, or you pay your dues for that year, or a member, you would receive a free copy of that cookbook and, you know, just, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing our diligence and providing to the community, you know, some form of benefit for, for your money and showing you outside of just the fundraising we're doing for the students, that there is value in what, what we are and what we're doing. We want to make the campus tour and the large fundraiser annual. We want to make these, like, we want to, we're here to stay. We want to keep raising money for the students that we represent, and we want them to have more and more success. The more money we have for them, the more students, their troubles for paying for, you know, their education. We want to alleviate that as much as possible, because unfortunately, at the community college level, I think the graduation rate for Yavapai College is only about forty-seven percent. And that's, it shouldn't be that low. It should, it should definitely be more than half of the students that, that start there should finish there at a two-year school and get their education, get their certificate or whatever they're working on. They should, they should get their education and be productive members of society. And we want to help make that achievable by delaying those costs that a lot of students, you know, that's the, that's the reason that they drop out of school is they can't afford it. We want to find a gauge to measure success and where we can improve. So, again, this is our first year, we've got no idea what we're doing, but we're going to figure it out. And hopefully, we can get feedback from city council members like you or just the people that we work with on how we can better approach doing what we're doing. And we want to help students with job placement, transferring to four-year schools, again, becoming as productive and as successful as they can be. And that's the whole presentation, thank you for your time. If you guys have any questions, I can stay for the duration of the meeting and give you any more information.
So, I do have one question. It's great to have you being so enthused, and I hope that you can get some more students in the Verde Valley to participate, because that's one thing that I've heard is that sometimes the foundation over here hasn't been able to raise the kinds of funds that it, that it needs to. So, how do you make sure that once you graduate, that someone or more people will take your place? How are you trying to ensure that process?
Ideally, once we have, once we've had the large fundraiser, because what we've talked about doing specifically for that is moving it back and forth between campuses as a way of raising awareness and getting students involved on all sides. I know Professor Pratt is working with Phi Theta Kappa now, but I'm sure he could help with that as well. It's just making students aware that this is a great thing, you can take part in, that would, again, help you, not just you, but your entire, the entire community going forward. Again, as a resume builder, this is something that, it's a big deal. You meet very important people, and you make lasting connections that for your entire life, it's like this is somebody you can go back to for a recommendation letter or to help you get a job and that, that sort of thing. And this is, this is how you do it, you have to go out and get your hands in the dirt and do these things. Right now, for, as far as the money is going to be distributed, it's going to be all on need base. So, no matter who donates, that money will go back into, you know, it's just going to be a large pool. And again, whoever the need is, those are the students, that's where the need is going to be met. Again, it's, hopefully, we can find more students. Again, I, I am sure that there, there are going to be, you know, wonderful students that are going to step up and, and take up the challenge every year. You know, especially once the club gets a larger base and a larger standing and a larger, you know, if you have professors like Professor Pratt, Jason White, the director of the honors college promoting it, you know, particularly here in the Verde, because Jason White, that also is a Verde Valley professor. I'm sure that there will be students that are going to want to participate in this, because again, we work directly with very important influential people.
So, it sounds like there really is something in it for any student who participates. There's something, there's a payback, which is, like you said, the networking, maybe the possibility of getting, because of their participation, a possibility of getting a scholarship with a university as they go on. I mean, there could be a lot of benefits to them participating.
Yeah, it's, it's a wonderful, I mean, it stands out on a resume that, you know, again, you took, you taking your time, putting your energy into raising, you know, with your success raising money for other students so that they themselves can be successful. And again, I keep saying resume, it look, it does look good, and it's very important on scholarship applications. Like, that's one of the things that we also want to work with, is that SALT talks about it, Phi Theta Kappa talks about it, is that, you know, if you, you know, scholarships are, tend to be very competitive, and you need to stand out from the other applicants. Like, a lot of those applicants have done food drives, they've done, you know, there are a lot of things that are very commonplace among scholarship applicants, and this is something that's very unique and could be very beneficial. Well, also, again, you know, making, networking and those connections, I mean, it, it makes it easier to win a scholarship. I'm not saying you can win one, it just makes it much easier. We're trying to establish scholarships for other students at Yavapai College. But, you know, for me, who's transferring onto a four-year school, this was great to put on a resume and, and probably went a long way towards helping me win the All Arizona tuition waiver.
Right, and then, like you said, helping maybe with daycare for students that need, I mean, it's what you're actually doing for the community, the daycare, helping with their, their needs so that they can go to school, because as we learn, many students have faced such impediments. You know, if they're, they have children or families, or they're taking care of their parents or whatever it is that comes up in life that keeps one from, from going to school. If they can get help with those issues and those things, that will keep them in school and they'll get that degree.
Because I think Diana Dowling actually gave a presentation of the board of directors at Yavapai College. And in her presentation, you know, tuition for Yavapai College is not that unreasonable. It's only like about twelve hundred dollars a year, which I think is like the third lowest in the state. But when you compile that on top of external cost, outside of room and board, there's another possibly three, four thousand dollars for transportation, childcare, unforeseen costs that financial aid, you know, the FAFSA, and these things don't cover. And that's what we want to help cover and bridge the gaps to that. Again, they also were talking about at Yavapai College, we, we, we had a day of convocation, and we came together with faculty members about what we could do to improve the college. We talked about how, when students leave the school, we typically, they, they just drop out. There's no explanation as to why they just typically stop coming. And that's a problem, because the school, in order for the school to know why they dropped out or what they, what the school can do to help them so that that doesn't happen, like a survey or, or something, so that when the student drops out, that process, there's something in there where it's, they can explain, like, it was because of the money or it was because of some other obligation or responsibility, or, you know. There, there isn't, doesn't exist. Even for the students that graduate, there's like, unless you apply for your graduation, like, for the degree, you apply to graduate, you know, some students, they just get their, they, they think they have their certificate and all this other stuff, it's not very clear. And that's part of what we're doing, is again, informing students. And we want students to be able to communicate with the, with the college and the community about what their struggles are, what they are having success with, what they aren't having success with. You know, it, it's, it's not okay that, you know, at a, at a community college, that only forty-seven percent of these students are graduating, because, you know, they, they don't have their degree, they don't have their certificate, they, they can't go back to their jobs necessarily, because you need to stay up to date in your job. Some of these students, these, these, you know, it, it's becoming a necessity in our society that, you know, the high school degree doesn't really mean anything anymore. You need some sort of, at least a four-year degree and experience working with people in the field. And if they don't have that, then, you just strike their shoulders, because it's terrible.
Can we catch the lights, Ryan?
And, you know, I think it's important to note again, and this organization is unique, because it's student-generated. They are the ones that know the issues, and they've actually recruited us as faculty and staff and community members. But it's just really neat that this is coming from students to help other students. And one of the things that accreditation agencies and others look at is retention rates. So, they're helping us with one of the things we've been working on. So, once again, I just appreciate all your efforts, Thomas, and you really are an example of what a model student is. You don't just excel in the classroom, you're out there doing all these other things. It just creates a lot of good energy on campus, and you're right, we do have to get more Verde students. And I'm now the Verde advisor for Phi Theta Kappa, and we will work on that.
Exactly, there you go. And I, I appreciate your guys' time. I hope you can look through the pamphlets and find out in your hearts if, if you have the ability to donate and become alumni members. I really do appreciate your time, and I'm sorry for talking your ear off. It was a little verbose, I, I need to work on that. But I, I really do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Thomas.
Okay, the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And tonight, we have Roger Dagnow here to speak from Cornville about the water and the budget.
Yes, my name is Roger Dagnow, and I pay taxes, and I'm a veteran, and I live in the outside area. So, tonight, I'd like to address the council and start off with fifty to seventy million in debt, but the spending machine wants more. At the last WIPA, or Arizona Water Infrastructure Finance Authority Board meeting held on April fifteenth of 2015, the city of Cottonwood pocketed nearly two million dollars in savings from lower interest rates subsidized by Arizona taxpayers in addition to a gift of six hundred thousand in a new loan debt forgiveness. At the same meeting were city officials, Mayor Jones, Doug Barkos, and Rudy Rodriguez. And they were asked by WIPA board members not to come back to ask for another subsidized loan without first lowering the outside water rates, which are thirty-three percent higher than the city bill payers for average water use. But as usual, the outside water rates were increased, and the Cottonwood City Council continues to grow and grow, and the appetite has just run away. The city is planning yet another Christmas shopping trip to WIPA in February to ask for more money, and then to the outside area with another water rate increase on March first and for the next five years. Again, no voice, no vote, no representation. But let's look at the facts. The city of Clarkdale mayor figures the outside area pays seventy-one percent of Cottonwood sales tax revenue, and that still isn't enough. Year after year, the city of Cottonwood only wants more and more of bigger water rate increases in store. The spending machine has to stop. We must say no. And when the city hears that or sees that, they still have an ace in their back pocket. And that's called the emergency resolution to make all work to save the machine and their necks. Now, because they exploit the fact that no one in the outside area can vote or have a voice or any representation, it's just a free-for-all. No savings, no cuts in sight, and no balanced budget. Finally, we have Mayor Jones, who has stated many a time for respect from speakers and people in this room, that the city of Cottonwood has done everything possible to better the outside residents' lives with new stores, new roads, rec center, a ballpark, city library, dump station, transfer station, and the city's water utility, along with the RV community. But they cannot deny the fact that we pay seventy-one percent of the city's sales tax revenue, along with the county handing over a hundred and seventy-one thousand for its library. Now, we only pay three percent for the privilege of shopping in Cottonwood, plus a tax on our utility bill to help pay for the upside-down rec center's debt. And to use a rec center, we get to pay a little bonus if we'd like to join. Even though we're paying seventy-one cents into the city's golden pocket, no voice, no vote, and no representation, and what do we get in return? Yes, we want Cottonwood's workers to have safe workplaces, good contracts, good benefits, a good health plan, retirement, but this small city of less than eleven thousand five hundred and huge government spending now has three hundred and forty employees. That's about two hundred more than what we had ten years ago. So, the city's pension liability and, again, appetite for hiring just continues to grow bigger and bigger. And how greater can the city's pension get? And they still want more. Cottonwood and the Big Boars appetite have gone wild. Until we say stop to this deficit spending, get new representation.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. So, there were quite a few facts there that were incorrect, and we can't respond. So, I would ask the city manager and the finance director to get with Mr. Dagnow and correct those items that were incorrect, if you would, if he would be willing. Thank you. Okay, the next item is approval of the minutes. We have the work session of January twelfth, 2016, and regular meeting of January nineteenth, 2016. Any comments or suggestions? Okay, so we had Mr. Ilinski made the motion, and Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Houdgie, you didn't?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right. Minutes passed, thank you. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is application for extension of premises liquor license permit, submitted by Tamara L. Morkin for that brewing company located at three hundred East Cherry Street for an event scheduled for February twenty-seventh, 2016. Is there, would anybody like to pull that item off of the agenda for discussion? Is anybody from the public going to pull that off for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. So, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Claims and adjustments?
Nope. New business.
Oops, sorry about that. New business. The following items are for council, I just marked them off, what the heck, are for the council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Approval of the Cottonwood Historic Preservation Matching Grant Program and earmarking the proceeds from the Historic Home Building Tour to fund the pro- proceeds from the Historic Home Building Tour to fund the program.
Would you mind if I asked you a question real quick?
Please.
Is there any conflict with me sitting on the council and discussing and voting on this item?
No, it's not a personal issue.
I didn't think there was, I just wanted to clarify that there's not.
Right, no. Thank you.
Mr. Scully?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. This is an issue that came about through the Historic Preservation Commission, and through the Historic Home Tour, that's been held two years now in November, and through the work of the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and putting together the home tour and this fund, which is Chairman Ilinski. And I also have here tonight a commission member, Ryan Bigler, who's also been, have to be involved in coordinating the home tour and this fundraising as well. I think there's a number of cities that have some similar programs over the last years, and it goes back, I think, a few years ago, when the state of Arizona had a very well-known fund that they used for historic preservation, it was over $1 million a year, almost the Life of Heritage Fund, which was early 90s to about 2009. They, that, that fund contributed $20 million to private businesses, facilities, expenditures, and leveraged over $25 million in private investment for historic preservation. And over that, that's the 20, period. People saw that this was a very good investment, that paid back, and contributed to revitalization of neighborhoods and communities, and community centers, and private businesses as well. Something that businesses, for example, many of the property owners in the historic industry, have been able to apply directly to the state for matching grants, to do facade improvements, but that's, that all got swept. And there's, there is a small private fund that the State Historic Preservation Act is running, but it's nowhere near what was available. So I think in the last few years, there's, this might have stimulated a few other cities that have, have some, Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff is a great afterthought program, Sedona has a program, and there's some others that were given some past agreements as well. Some of those cities have some other sources that would be nice to have, bonding through the general revenue bonding. Phoenix only did twice, over $10 million. Tucson's got some private funds. Flagstaff started this great funding they've had for years that generates $2 million a year for improvements through restaurant, hotel, water parks. And they regularly go in and go as a private owner, these historic properties, and just go to their commission and get these matching grants, they do it all the time. In this case, this, this home tour just started, it's the second year, it's growing, got more interest, they're doing more good, getting fundraising for foundations. The amount that was generated this year was over $4,000 to start with, it was, let's get this number, $4,000, over $4,400 was put into the pool, and then to put on the event to do some of the one-time expenses with banners and support materials, but it ended up with over $2,400, which, which came from private donations and fees, and that would then be used to provide, in this year, people to buy their own landmark properties for matching grants, and be a 50/50, and there's some program that runs, which could be used for quite a few exterior improvements, painting, roof repairs, window repairs, things that are visible from the exterior. Hopefully, this could grow as well, and I think it's just been such successful programs in other communities, they've gone into setting up multi-million dollar programs, doing for larger, but it's a modest program, starts slow, see what happens. People go through the Historic Preservation Commission to get the project approved, according to the Historic Preservation Standards, and then they come to the staff, and they give a two-page application, and you'll be able to just process that through, and get them booked, and that's a community. Hopefully, there'll be interest. So that's, there's the outline of the program that was put together and approved by the commission, and some background material in other cities do, and other than that, I think it's a pretty straightforward program.
I really think that this is another one of those no brainers. I know that, I think it was very smart to start this program, it's a nascent program, it's growing, I think it was great to have it the same day we have Walking on Main, and it's been successful, and people like it, I don't know why we wouldn't say yes. Take the money that you've raised and use it for the 50/50 grant. Folks, it generated a lot of excitement, I know the commission worked hard, Hudson Ilinski and Ryan and the other commissioners, and they got a lot of volunteers. I know the vice mayor helped and walked her little legs around town, I think, and so I think it's, yeah, why wouldn't we approve this? We've talked about it before, and...
Yeah, and you did a great job on writing this, the commission's small grant program, I mean, that took some work too, I think.
Yeah.
It was terrific. Good resources from these other counties, Sedona and Flagstaff, some similar smaller grant programs, and so it was, it had to go to, to the programs that the commission thought of, and this is priority.
Yeah.
And that it's a small program, and it may not go to too many programs to start it. Then there was also, I think this came to the commission before, about the city donating into this as well?
Yeah, that's right. As the council will recall, when we first discussed doing the home tour for 2015, we came to council and asked for permission to use the proceeds to go into this matching grant program, and the council approved that for one-year only. And I think what we'd like to do, as we grow the program, is to make sure that we can rely on that, that funding mechanism for the grant program, because it's a good way to incentivize businesses to donate, and it's a good way to get volunteers involved, and it's a good way to get people who own historic homes to get involved in the program, if they know that, one, it's not costing the city any money to put the program on, and two, it's putting money back in the community for a good cause. So I think it gets people energized and willing to become more involved, and...
The only thing bad about being a volunteer is I miss the whole thing.
I know.
I didn't get to go see any of the houses, or the irrigation ditch, or...
We're working on that.
[laughing]
For 2016, we're making sure that the volunteers who do volunteer can also attend the tour, so...
Yay!
We've heard you.
Okay, good. I made myself laugh, "I want to see this too." So I think you guys have done a great job, and I would, are there any comments from members of the public? Ryan, do you have anything to add? Mr. Pratt?
Is it time to make a motion?
It is.
I move to approve the 2016, the 2016 Cottonwood Historic Preservation Matching Grant Program as presented, and approve proceeds from the Historic Home and Building Tour to be used to fund the program. Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now the claims and adjustments? I move to pay the claims.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.